At this time, I'd like to call the BPU meeting of July 3rd to order. We'd like to welcome all listening or viewing this meeting of the Kansas City Board of Public Utilities, whether in person or through technology. This meeting is being recorded, both audio and video. During the visitors' comments section of the agenda, community members who wish to speak to the board will be asked to provide their name and address and will then have three minutes to speak. Members of the public using Zoom that wish to address the board need to use the raise hand feature at the bottom of the application or window to signal that they wish to address the board during the visitor comments section. In addition, there will be a public comments section after the general manager staff reports. During this section, the public may comment on this evening's presentations. Members of the public connected by phone only need to press star nine to indicate they wish to address the board in the visitors' comments section. Those attending in person should sign up on the signup sheet located near the entry to the boardroom. Comments are limited to three minutes and should be directed to the board. As these comments are public, the board cautions visitors to not disclose confidential account information or information on an account that is not in their name. Staff will not provide individual account information or history in an open meeting. As always, the public may also email or call the BPU with any concerns. The agenda and presentations may be found on the BPU website, or if you're using Zoom, they will appear on your screen. As a reminder, this is a business meeting of the Board of Directors, and we will conduct the meeting accordingly. The following rules apply to this meeting. Every person in a room will act respectfully towards each other. Personal attacks and accusations toward any person will not be tolerated. State your specific issue to the board only, we will then direct or determine staff's involvement. Attendees shall refrain from side discussion or individual commentary that interferes with speakers or their other attendees at this meeting. If side discussion is necessary, please take it outside the boardroom. If any of these rules are breached during the meeting, that individual is subject to removal from the boardroom. My name is Tom Groneman, I'm second district and board president. Other members of our board and staff include Bill Johnson, our general manager, David Haley, member at large, position two and board vice president, Stevie Wake, senior, first district and board secretary, Brett Parker, third district, Mary Gonzalez, member at large, position one, Rose Mulvaney Henry, member at large, position number three, and Angelo Lawson, our chief counsel. Please remember that if, to turn off your phones or put them on silent and be aware that the microphones are very sensitive and can pick up and record comments made anywhere in a room. Before we begin, please rise and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Andrew, roll call, please.
Roll call, Gonzalez.
Here.
Groneman.
Here.
Haley.
President.
Wakes.
Here.
Mulvaney Henry.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
You have a quorum.
All right, before I ask for a motion to approve the regular session agenda for July 3rd, are there any comments or additions or subtractions from the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Gonzalez.
Aye.
Groneman.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Wakes.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Before I ask for a motion to approve the minutes of the work session of June 18th, 2024, are there any additions or corrections?
Ms. Rose, I'm moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Gonzalez.
Aye.
Groneman.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Wakes.
Aye.
Henry.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Okay, before I ask for a motion to approve the minutes of the regular session of June 18th, are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
I'm of approval of the minutes.
Wake, second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Roll call.
Roll call, Gonzalez.
Aye.
Groneman.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Wakes.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Okay, this time I'm going to turn the meeting over to Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Kaylee, is there anyone wishing to speak tonight? Thank you. Rob, is there anyone on the line wanting to speak tonight? All right. We'll move on to the next topic, our legislative updates. So I'll ask Kimberly Swaddy to come up to the podium and just tell us what's been going on on the legislative front.
Well, good evening, everyone, and happy Fourth of July Eve. So hopefully, everyone has a safe and fun and relaxing holiday tomorrow. So the, as the senator knows, the legislative session for 2024 is over, and that did include a very special session, which prominently featured Wyandotte County on the latter half of the discussion of that particular day. So the first portion of the morning on Tuesday, June 18th, related to tax policy and passage of a large comprehensive tax package. But the bulk of the day featured a discussion about putting together a state incentive package to lure one or two professional sports teams from an adjacent state. So it could be the Colorado Rockies or the Denver Broncos. Kind of feel like it's not one of those two. But anyway, nevertheless, that that did pass and did, that tool did take effect on July 1st, and that tool is effective for the next year in order to attract, again, one or more professional sports teams, either a professional football team or baseball team right here to Wyandotte County. So that could be a huge boon to the water system and the electric system. So we will, we were watching that closely. The UG was largely the entity driving the conversation, but we were watching closely. And we'll continue to watch those conversations as they unfold and see what happens over the course of the next year. Of course, if nothing happens in the first year that that Starbahn legislation is allocated, the Legislative Coordinating Council does have the authority under the piece of legislation to extend the incentive package for, I believe, another year for deliberations to continue. So we, nothing has been decided, and obviously, we will all watch and see what transpires in Jackson County and beyond, also in the Missouri State House. So, but it is always a pleasure to get to be here before you all. And I did bring my business partner and husband, Josh Swaddy. So we both feel very honored and proud to represent municipal utilities, and that specifically includes Kansas City, Kansas Board of Public Utilities. We were just so pleased this last year, or this last spring, to get to host a whole series of Kansas policymakers, both staff from the congressional offices, but then also Kansas legislators to both the Neiman Power Plant and to the water treatment facility. And we had a fabulous tour, and we all tasted the water that was pulled straight out of the river that morning and just had a fantastic dialogue. So I just want you, as a board, to know how wonderful Mr. Johnson did and Mr. Jeremy Ash and the whole team that was there. They, obviously extremely knowledgeable, took time to answer any and all questions and just top-notch professionals. So I just feel good in the team that you have on staff, working on behalf of your community. So the Kansas City BPU works very closely with Kansas Municipal Utilities, and I'm going to send this to Mr. Johnson shortly. This is our kind of final scorecard, if you will, and I don't really know why we call it a scorecard, because we don't really score anything. It's more just illustrative, for your all's sake. But there were more than 3,400 pieces of legislation introduced over the last two years. And I mention the last two years because any piece of legislation that was introduced in the first part of the biennium can still be acted on in the second if it's not been specifically defeated. So there were 3,416 bills introduced, and that does include the several that were introduced during the special legislative session, our one-day legislative session. We had more than 100 bills that were tracked by KMU and by Kansas City Board of Public Utilities, and we were specifically involved in 90 of those pieces of legislation. And they ranged across the board, from, you know, specific issues on the electric side to water issues, to who could attach to our utility poles, to changing the franchise fee language at the county level, which could have a real impact on the state level, to, well, how can, how can the utility interact? And how can all public entities interact with policymakers? There was legislation that would pretty, it would restrict our ability to engage. There was also legislation that we were involved on related to sewer disconnects. And the senator heard that legislation in the Senate Local Government Committee, and it could have had a real impact on, well, it would have required all water utilities and wastewater utilities if an individual had been disconnected from the system, not due to lack of pay. But there are many, many disconnects that occur just simply from a time issue. Like, there's a line that's not been used for 50 years because the building's not been in use for that long, and then the line has collapsed, and so that line is not serviceable. But under this piece of legislation, it would have required the utility to reconnect at whatever cost that particular line if a customer made a request. And so there are, you know, valid reasons to certainly try and connect, reconnect all customers. But if the line's not been cared for or if the line has collapsed and it's going to cost thousands and thousands of dollars that is actually to be shouldered by the customer itself, you have to balance that with the cost to the utility. And so we were quite involved in that conversation, and ultimately, that bill didn't go very far. Another piece of legislation that we worked on significantly, two additional pieces, actually. One relates to distributed generation and the ability of customers to have access to largely solar, largely solar panels on their home here in the Wyandotte County area, because you're not probably going to permit a small wind turbine. And so from a, there's two different state policies related to distributed generation. One is parallel generation. And that parallel generation statute came down from the federal government more than almost 50 years ago now. And that statute has been on the books in Kansas for a significant number of years. It is required by all utilities, including Kansas City BPU, to, if a customer wants to hook on solar panels and they want to use a parallel generation statute that allows them to be compensated at a, you know, enhanced rate, then the utility is required to hook them up. There is another paradigm called net metering, which has been subject to several Kansas Supreme Court cases and a lot of discussion in the legislature. And at this time, and actually nationally, most municipal electric utilities and electric cooperatives are not mandatory, mandatorily required to participate in a net metering program. Kansas City Board of Public Utilities has voluntarily had the same net metering program that Evergy has had, going back, gosh, 2009, when the state enacted a mandatory net metering provision for Evergy, then Casey P. and Ellen Westar. And there was an effort to make that net metering statute mandatory for municipal electric utilities and electric cooperatives. And so KMU and the Kansas City Board of Public Utilities, Jeremy and others from BPU, worked diligently over the course of the year to update the municipal utility distributed generation toolkit to really push out, not only in Kansas City BPU service territory, but also across the state, all the other 117 other municipal electric utilities. You know, what are the specifics of parallel generation? What are the specifics of net metering? You know, what scenario might work best for what customer? And so then, city councils or Board of Public Utilities has all of that information at their fingertips. And that was just released a couple of months ago. And we're having, we've already had our first workshop, and we have several more statewide. So that was a big issue that we worked on, was not making that mandatory, but allowing us, you know, we know, you all know, your customer base best. And so what policy is going to work best in your community rather than having the state tell you exactly what to do? Another element that we worked on, and we actually passed this out of the House overwhelmingly, and it was stymied in the Senate. And this relates to water and wastewater operator certification. And I think the water team can speak to how important this particular piece of legislation is. And we will absolutely reintroduce it this coming legislative session. But right now, Kansas is one of the only states that requires an in-person water wastewater certification test. Most of the other states use this national online testing system. It allows individuals to test within their area of employment, like they do not have to leave. Versus if you're in, you know, western Kansas, then you have to drive four or five hours to a testing center. And then you have to purchase all of the materials associated with the test. And so it's a significant time and expense to take this test. And so it's a real disincentive for many water and wastewater operator certify, operators to become certified. We have more than 100 cities that need more certified operators. And so this piece of legislation would have allowed Kansas to move to this national online certification that comes with reciprocity from other states. So if there were individuals that were interested in coming from Indiana or Ohio or Colorado and working here as a class one, two, three, or four system operator, and they've taken and passed that national test, then they can actually come here and work. And so we were disappointed that it didn't advance in the Senate. There was some politics going on, as the senator knows how that happens. Senate ag, yeah, ag and natural resources. But we do believe that we will prevail, and the BPU team has said that that will be very helpful, just even within this utility, to gain access to that national certification process. I won't go through all of the other things, there's, there are a lot. But we also oppose legislation that would have added an administrative ordinance to the definition of what would qualify for a special election. So right now, under most, most current situations, you really only have a special election if there are really big issues that might impact a community. And in this particular administrative case, this stems out of an issue going on in Johnson County related to a redevelopment. And it was the day-to-day kind of operations of the city or the day-to-day operations of a Board of Public Utilities that, under this piece of legislation, could be then subject to a special election, which would only just really increase the costs and of providing that service and then delay its implementation or stymie it altogether. So the entire municipal utility community and the cities and the counties all strongly opposed that particular change. We can definitely talk about more, I don't want to spend too much of your time. But we did also secure a significant amount of new funding this legislative session directed to water and wastewater projects and technical assistance. So it will be statewide, the money is distributed statewide. But again, going back to this reinvestment in water and particularly water resources, quantity and quality, we've been, we, KMU and BPU have been pushing diligently, the legislature for years, on increasing the spending on water. And the last legislative session, we were actually able to secure $35 million directed just to water quantity and quality projects and technical assistance. And then this year, we were able to secure essentially another 16 million more. We don't know how long we will be able to continue to secure that funding for all of the communities statewide, but we're going to continue to push. And the Kansas City Board of Public Utilities is in, there are a lot of listening sessions going on right now with the Water Office as we seek to allocate this funding. And we are in Region Six, which is the Meridaseen Rack. And so they've had a series of public open houses already. The Water Office, the Chief Engineer, Division of Water Resources to gain input on where and how the money should be spent. And then, and then they will come back in September with additional information on where the money will be spent. So I know that the BPU team was involved in providing some information and feedback in the meeting that was here locally. So I'm happy to answer any questions. Mr. Johnson will get this information to you for your reading edification. And fire away, I'd love to answer questions.
I did, was there no legislation regarding, legislation regarding funding for home weatherization?
So no, not this legislative session in Kansas. There was, there was nothing put forth that would allocate state dollars toward home weatherization. Congress has a series of programs that the state receives money for that's then distributed out within the communities that can be used for home weatherization. And that's more on the congressional side. But Kansas has not participated in such programs in more than a decade.
It was always an education for me. Thank you, Kimberly, Jen Corr, Swaddy, and Josh Swaddy, for what you bring into. I mean, I'm always learning more when I hear, I appreciate so much the review. Along this line, though, beyond weatherization, do we do anything about renewables? We just had a still on my mind from just what we've come out of. Are we doing anything, or has anything come through the process or the pipeline for Kansas? Looking at, I know we have all the wind farms that are, but is there anything solar or wind or anything else that we're, I know we're in a very conservative climate. And I know that certainly one or more chairs of Senate committees won't entertain that. But was anything proposed that you're aware of that would have benefited the utility, at least to look at as we expand our portfolio here at BPU?
So I think, actually, the way I look at this is, was there anything proposed that would have hindered your all's ability to gain access to low-cost, reliable, affordable homegrown power? And there was nothing that was, that passed that would impact your ability to select, if you issued an RFP for more generation. There was nothing that was passed or enacted that would impede your ability to select whatever type of generation you all feel is the best fit for your community. There was a piece of legislation, and I apologize, this I should have certainly mentioned. There was a piece of legislation, actually a couple, about four, largely starting on the House side, a couple on the Senate side, but the focus on these were all on the House side, that would have said that if you retire existing fossil fuel-based generation, that you are required to install the same type of fossil fuel generation. So if you were to retire 400 megawatts of coal, the Kansas Legislature would say, under those bills, that you have to install 400 megawatts of new coal. Well, that may not be the most economic choice for your community. Might be, but it may, but it may not. And having the legislature say, this is, this is the only path that you can take, is a problem. So I think the key is that there was nothing that was enacted or passed that would impede your ability to pick the lowest-cost generation that best meets the needs of your community and best fits within your existing generation portfolio and your future portfolio.
Thank you. I appreciate you.
Kimberly, I know I did not hear you say that the state of Kansas has not participated in federal weatherization funding programs for the last decade? Did I hear you say that?
The state has not allocated funding for weatherization programs, state taxpayer dollars. They have.
Okay, so, okay, so we, in the infrastructure bill, right, I mean.
Federal money.
Right.
Yes.
Was supposed to be allocated through the states. Do, where do we sit with that at this point in Kansas?
So, so there was, there were two different bills that were passed. There was the IRA piece of legislation, and then there was what we call Bill, the bipartisan infrastructure law. And Bill focused on five buckets of where and how money could be spent. Transportation, resiliency, which Kansas defined resiliency as to deal with wildfire remediation and prevention, and telecommunications, transportation, and water. And on the, the power side, the state of Kansas designated the focus would be spent on transmission upgrades and greater system reliability. So any funding that came through the federal government on the Bill side for power would go to transmission system upgrades and really nothing else. Now, on the IRA side, there is a litany of programs that customers can take advantage of, largely on the tax side, if they're investing in more energy efficiency. So those are the two federal programs. But then there's also federal money that has been allocated, you know, yearly for decades, specifically related to weatherization, and then also related to lie heap. So, you know, during the periods when it's super hot or super cold to help pay utility bills. But that's all federal money coming to the state and allocating out. So.
Okay, and Andrew, I'm going to put you on the spot because I know you've told us about a program that, you know, a consumer can get up to $14,000 per home for various weatherization efforts. Is any of that what you told us, is that covered in anything Kimberly just said?
It is. So when she talks about the two programs on the side, it's largely coming through the tax side, is one of those components will be associated with, either called HOMES or HIRA, it's all acronym-based. But yes, that is all federal dollars that will be coming. And each state will get a bucket of funds, and the state of Kansas is still working their way through that process. Some other states have already moved a little quicker. But again, that's all coming down the road. And it'll both be on the tax side, as well as so that you can go get tax credits associated with your taxes or direct to consumers based on income levels.
Right, and, and, okay, thank you, Andrew. Kimberly, that's the one I was really zeroing in on. And so, David, I'm not going to put you on the spot, but where are we at in Kansas? Why can't we get this money allocated to our consumers?
So I can answer that question.
Kimberly's going to answer it.
Yeah.
It's part of the state infrastructure funding. And we're working on several different programs, and it, I don't, I don't know why it's taking longer. But we had a, we had a grant fund that was supposed to open up for applications on July 1st, and we still don't have the guidance from the state yet. So I think that they're still working, they're still working through it. I know a big portion of it is that they're largely focused on helping get money out that's related to, to match projects, like projects that are being put forth to federal government. And then, you know, there's a required local match. So I know that that's really first and foremost what they're trying to do. And then I think we're still kind of waiting to see on the back end.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Sorry, that's a long.
No, I, I, I mean, our, you know, our, our consumers at BPU are waiting for this, so.
And I, and I mean, I think businesses have stood up, they're ready. They're ready to help homeowners take advantage of the funding that could be available to them, whether it's direct assistance or tax credits. So I know businesses are eager to see that finalized.
Thank you very much.
Right over the state line, they got it going with their state. They moved pretty quickly with that, and they're operating. And so as, as, as a pastor, members of my church ask me, hey, you know, we'd like to do this in Kansas.
For perspective, Evergy, anytime Evergy wants to do anything, they have to go, I mean, I don't think I'm misspeaking, but any, anytime they want to do anything that's going to have an impact on rates, they have to go get permission before the Corporation Commission, which isn't a bad thing, but it's a very time-consuming and expensive process to go through a commission proceeding. And Evergy has been trying for more than a decade to do the same program in Kansas that they've had on the books in Missouri. And for one reason or another, it has just not happened at the Corporation Commission. And there was a breakthrough this year, and I think an agreement was reached that would allow some additional investments in energy efficiency. But it's taken a long time, to your exact point, that literally five miles from here, if even that, the situation is different. And that's been a point of frustration for lawmakers and homeowners and others. But hopefully, now the new policy will be more advantageous to allow, to allow those investments.
Any other questions from the board? Kimberly, I got a few.
Okay, yes.
All right, so first, I'm a little bit puzzled as to why, all of a sudden, after all these years, you start calling me Mr. Johnson.
Well, anytime anyone got there.
All right, so you talked about the stadium. And Kansas just changed the Starbonds to where it went from 50% to 70% of the state financing piece of that legislation. If Missouri comes back. If Missouri comes back and counters with something, where do you see that going in Topeka?
I mean, you might know better than I. I feel like the Kansas offer was kind of the, the best offer. Um, I.
Wasn't in all the meetings though, so I didn't.
Uh, I, Missouri was, um, I think they kind of wax and wane to see what Kansas was going to do and how serious of a package Kansas was going to put forth. And they put forth a package. And it cannot be ignored. And so now I, Missouri has come back and said that they're going to have a nice package to offer. But there are lawmakers that are still, um, upset about the Rams leaving and how that all went down. And so some lawmakers on the other side of the state perhaps aren't as keen to bend over backwards to keep another team here. I don't know. We'll see. Uh, I, my hope is that we just don't start another economic border war.
Well, that's where I was going. So if Kansas is going to counter after Missouri comes up with something, I mean, is this Kansas's final, final offer or would it lead to more of a border war over one or two of the teams?
Brief, brief opine, if I, if I might. So what we have in Kansas, um, they don't have in Missouri. And that is the star bonds, S T A R, the sales tax and revenue bond, which is up to a billion dollars now that was passed just on the 18th. And if there is some mechanism for Missouri that they come up with, that's going to start at a billion, that basically is speculative based on what a developer would, would be eligible for. That's going to put, I think, Missouri in the game. There has not been, um, a discussion or even, uh, the appetite by those who are in, um, the Missouri leadership and those that want to replace them to put that burden of tax, uh, on the property or even the sales taxes of Missouri, um, Missouri constituencies right now. And that's, that's what I think gives a slight advantage in this discussion between the, the two states as to what, um, supporting a new development for a stadium might be.
Okay. Second question, uh, was what you talked about earlier was taxes. I know that there was, there was a lot of compromise to get to, uh, uh, what the legislature passed. Do you see that they're stealing the appetite to go to a s- single tax rate? Somewhere down the road or is that everybody satisfied with where we are today?
No, I don't think many people are satisfied with that final package, to be honest. And I think that those views were expressed by, uh, a number of policymakers. Uh, but there was also the recognition that this is part of the governing process and that it's compromise and that, uh, a lot of times people don't get what they want or they leave unhappy. And that's usually the best way to get a workable package. Think there's still a number of policymakers, um, that are very interested in moving the state to a single rate. We'll see. I, I know we have a gubernatorial election in two years and so I fully expect us to continue to have many more robust conversations about income tax policy and property tax policy. And I know there were pieces in this last bill, uh, that, that weren't included or that had been pared back specifically related to property tax for, for seniors or for social security tax for seniors, um, or for veterans that lawmakers would have really liked to have seen original proposals, um, instead of the pared back ones. So I, I think we are not done having a conversation on tax policy.
Next two is, uh, thank you for meeting with me on meeting with some of the state offices earlier this year. One was a state revolving loan program and the fact that there's not new money getting introduced into that. So do you see that being a higher focus on the state to be able to fund that? Because we're obviously rely on that fund quite a bit here at BPU.
So, and this actually, thank you for bringing this up because this is, this is an issue that we are working on a great deal that will have a real impact, not only on Kansas City BPU and its customers, but statewide. Congress reopened what we call earmarks, or they call congressionally directed spending recently. And Kansas was the beneficiary, um, including, you know, Kansas City Board of Public Utility of key congressionally directed spending projects. Specifically on the water side. Well, what I think took everyone by surprise, including the policymakers themselves, was that the, the money that was coming in wasn't some from some, you know, federal pot of money that, you know, is just always full that we can draw down on. They actually took it from, from existing money that is, that goes to the states to help support the state revolving loan fund. And that state revolving loan fund is incredibly important to, uh, helping communities. It provides low interest loans to helping all communities of all sizes, um, invest in upgrades, um, repairs, new systems for water and wastewater. And because of the way that the federal government allocated that money, the state of Kansas has no money to allocate for state revolving loan fund for this fiscal year. And so we are going to Congress and we've met with the members of the delegation on several occasions, both over the phone and in person twice to continue to brief them on this and ask them that if, two things. One, to set aside money to make that SRF program whole, not just in Kansas, but statewide or nationwide. And this has been the focus of many sort of, um, national news stories. But then also, if you're going to continue with congressionally directed spending, have it come from that mythical pot of funding. Don't have it come from existing, you know, water programs that are already largely allocated. So that is a big issue and it's one that we're continuing to work on. And so for the time being, we are constrained as a state in our ability to make investments in, um, in programs and SRF.
And then the final one, uh, BP put a lot of work into making an application for the solar for all project. And, uh, which would have meant we would have gotten tax credit to be able to offer uh, cheaper energy prices for low income citizens in our community. Unfortunately, Kansas was not selected to be a recipient of those dollars. Uh, and I still don't know why. So I guess I'm asking if you have any more insight and that Kansas make a strong enough effort in trying to secure those type dollars.
I don't have more insight as to why Kansas was not selected. It is a question that I have. And now that you've asked, I'll do some additional digging to better understand where we may have missed the mark on that. Um, we have a fabulous resource and, uh, solar resource in the state, so it, it makes great sense that that would have been a program that would have been available to us. So I'll do some digging and see what we can't find out.
Good.
And I can't speak to the level of, um, work that was put into that application from the state standpoint. I, you know, wish I knew more about that, but, um, generally speaking, I know they, they do try to, to bring down, draw down as much money for the state as possible in the administration.
Well, we made our case. This is one of the top two communities in the whole state that, uh, qualified for the program at the federal level. But for some reason, Kansas did not receive funding. So if you can, if you can help us.
I'll see if I can find out more.
All right. Any other questions? Uh, thank you, Kimberly. Thank you, Josh. Uh, certainly always look forward to you coming.
It is always a pleasure. Thank you for having us and we can stick around if you think there's more questions or whatever.
Okay. Uh, if you, if you want to, I mean, that we've changed our agenda to where there is a public comment section towards the bottom. So if anybody has any questions and if you're here and you can be, certainly come back up and answer, answer those. Thank you. So, so we'll move into GM staff reports. Uh, so first thing up is, first person up is Lori Austin for our May 2024 financials.
Excuse me, Bill?
Yeah.
Um, and Mr. President, a point of order. Um, you know, when, when we go through and Lori, I mean, I'm, I'm trying to save you here um, from having to give you yet another presentation, but you know, we don't have a consent agenda on this board. And we deal with things that, you know, are unique in nature and I understand why we don't. Like this is one thing I think, you know, that could fall under consent agenda. We get these financials in advance. You know, Lori comes and presents them and, and does a great job. But I'm wondering, I mean, you know, to the extent the board has questions, of course, I mean, I think we could direct them, you know, to Lori during this time, but I, I just wondered if, if this is a kind of an item that we could put on a consent agenda. You certainly can give your presentation tonight, but for, for the future, I don't, I don't know that we're precluded from doing that, but I also don't know the rules.
Well.
You, you could come up with whatever rules you wanted for the consent agenda. And we could, we could put it in there where you could put minutes, you could put, I mean, this is clearly up to the boards, anything that passed, came out of committee unanimous, um, I said minute meetings, but any sort of follow-up documentation, anything like that, you could, the board could decide in a work session what they wanted in consent agenda. And then you could always have the, put in the ability to pull something out if you wanted to discuss it.
And I just, I put that out, just, this is just one thing that reminded me when I watched, you know, the.
Nominations would be another thing you could put in there.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. President, I, that's certainly up to you and the rest of the board, but I just thought I'd suggest it.
It's a good idea.
Yeah. I, I think it's a good idea. I personally though, would want to make sure that any anomalies especially would be highlighted and so that, you know, we would have an opportunity to have some pre discussion. But if everything's pretty much in sync with where it has been and where it would be, then I think a consent agenda is a good idea. You know, barring not knowing what's different. I appreciate this suggestion.
I guess I'm looking if there are any further discussion or you want to take any action on that? Or, or how do you want, where you want to go? Angela, what kind of action do we, you know?
I would, I would suggest we add it to the board rules of procedure.
That's what I was, yeah.
Is that back to the policy committee?
So, um, if you can give me even some direct, some quick direction, I can do it in a, you know, in a work session, I could do a draft for you. Or you could send it back to the committee, however you want to do it.
So for this evening, unless you are so inclined, uh, may I make a motion that we waive the presentation on the May financials? Subject to any questions from the board? Is that a motion I can make?
It is. I mean, they've been, you can move to approve. They've been presented to the board by virtue of you receiving them. So you might just wait and see if there are any questions and then.
But she looks so eager.
I think she's good.
All right. Uh, so I'm, I'm, I guess waiting to see if the boards want to take any action on that or.
Yes.
Go ahead. Rose?
Well, I'm, I made my motion. I guess we're waiting to see to the extent there are any questions from the board about this, these particular financials, which would require perhaps a presentation or a response from Lori. I don't have any questions.
Could you restate, could you restate?
Okay, the motion?
We restate the motion.
Okay. The, the motion for this evening is to waive the presentation of the May 2024 financials this evening. The verbal presentation of the financials this evening, subject to any questions from the board.
Second.
Thank you.
Are these pub, are they, is this published on the website?
Yes.
So that it, the public, if they want to see the financials?
Yes.
They could go on.
Yes.
Website and look it up.
The, the full financials.
Place they, this is not the only place, your presentation is not the only place where they get it.
My presentation is on prior to the, or when the board gets the, the packet as well.
Okay. We have a motion in a second to dispense with the May 24 financial.
The, the oral present, the verbal presentation.
And to adopt them.
And to adopt them.
To adopt.
Okay. Roll call. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Brenneman?
Aye.
Haley?
No.
Wakes?
Aye.
Malvini Henry?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
That motion carries.
So hang on Lori. So are there any questions before she sit down? Okay. All right. So Rose, I guess I'm going to go to the next question.
Yes.
All right. So is this the only thing you want to have added to a consent?
And why, I think the policy committee will probably, and yes, I just put another meeting on my calendar for the policy committee. Um, I, I think that's something, what I'm hearing from Angie is that's something we'd have to discuss as to what the parameters we would consider for a consent agenda.
Okay.
And like I said, I don't think there's very many things that could be, although Angie just gave us four or five examples, I think that possibly could be as well.
Right. And that's kind of where I was leading with my question is there, you know, I know, I know this is only focused on financials, but if you want to, you want to consider others, probably the plan to do it is.
And, and of course tonight's motion was just related to the May 2024 verbal reading of the financials.
I got it. Okay. And thank you.
If I might share, Mr. President, the reason for my, not is, I was all primed and prepped to veteran analyze it. I think it's a good policy to go forward, uh, to have on consent agenda, that which we've had, but, um, and as a, as a board member said, she was all prepped and ready to go to bring it in. Certainly, um, henceforth though, if it would be the decision that comes out of the policy committee to have it on consent, I'd be prepared certainly. Uh, and I'd welcome it and look forward to it. But for tonight, I just thought it was probably something we should go through with. We should bear up under one, potentially one last time.
I'm still going to say you're welcome.
All right. Uh, the next topic, uh, Darren, uh, if you can come up, give everybody an update on our electric operations projects.
Okay. Um, unless you'd like to waive this presentation as well. I am.
I would not, Darren.
Okay. Um, I'm going to go through a, a brief update on, on some of our capital projects where we are at a few of our, our large projects right now in the year. So we have several, uh, new developments going on in the county. Um, you know, the Rock Island Bridge is, is set, still projected, open, uh, layered this summer. Um, you know, we've completed our installation of our infrastructure, um, and we're waiting on completion of their infrastructure and interconnection with us. Um, so we've got our portion of that project all completed. The, uh, holiday sand gravel. They are building a, uh, sand and gravel, basically mine or cover facility near the Missouri River. And that's, uh, it's up near the Neiman, uh, treatment plant, Neiman Power Plant. And that, that project is going to require us to, um, actually extend a feeder, um, from our Neiman substation over to serve them. Uh, that's something that's going to be happening later on this year in terms of construction. Uh, not started on that yet, but they're targeting a, a late, uh, layer this year, basically into the year to, to open their facility. Um, the yard's two apartments. Um, so, so actually two of the four apartment buildings are already powered up and energized. Uh, we've got power to two of their, two of their facilities already, um, just as of this week. Um, I don't, I don't know their structure, um, their schedule for actually getting tenants and everything on board, but we do have two other, of their buildings um, ready to go. We're ready to go on the other two. Um, based on their schedule, they're talking about, um, you know, the third building coming later this year and the fourth building, um, in spring of next year. You know, two other big developments out in Legends area, the, the American Royal, um, campus, new headquarters and the Holden Fields development. Um, those are two projects we've been working, you know, very closely with developers so far, a lot of coordination back and forth. Uh, we haven't started much construction on either one of those projects yet. Just based on the schedule, we're kind of just now kicking off, um, some relocation of some infrastructure for American Royal. And, you know, those will be big projects for the latter half of this year. And both of those are targeting again, spring of next year, um, for being online. Um, and the last bigger development project we have going on right now is, is Marvin. Um, they're a window manufacturer. They're, um, constructing a new facility in the Woodlands, uh, Skanel Development, right near the, the Amazon facility there. Um, and so we're working with them, coordinating, and they're just targeting a, a 2025 date right now. They're still kind of working through delivery of some of their major electrical equipment. So that's a few developments we've been working on. Um, you know, again, made, made, uh, good progress, Rock Island Bridge and, and yards are both ready to go. And we're waiting to kick off some of these bigger projects. We've been working with developers on both of them for, for some time. Um, 98th Street pole relocation, um, that's a project working with, uh, KDOT and the city of Edwardsville. You know, they're doing a, uh, basically road improvement project along 98th street in between Kansas Avenue and I-70. Uh, and that's a full road replacement. You know, they're widening it, widening the road. They're adding sidewalks and other traffic control, uh, measures. And so for them to do that, we had to actually relocate the existing infrastructure along 98th street. Um, so we built almost a mile and a half of new, uh, new overhead line and then had to remove the old line. So it was out of the way of where the road's going to be. Um, you know, doing that project required. You know, doing that project required us to build new, new crossings, new power line crossings across four thirty five. And then part of the I seventy four thirty five interchange. Do you have a question? Oh, I'm sorry, so like, um, and I mentioned that because it's, you know, a pretty big undertaking for us, you know, pulling across interstate like that requires a lot of. Permitting and coordination with KDOT, a lot of traffic control, you know, we do it in, in off hours on weekends, so they can handle. Handle the traffic control for that. And so that's a project we've, we've already completed this year, just finished up recently, we have just a few. Minor cleanup coordination issues we're working through at the city of Edwardsville, but, but that's all, all finalized. Levy project, so the Army Corps of Engineers, you know, as a, as a massive project going on right now where they're raising the levy. And replacing some of their existing pumping stations there through Argentine Armored Dale. And then around Central Avenue on the eastern side of the county. So this has been a big project, it's actually been going on for some time, you know, as far back as, as twenty twenty one, we've been working with them and coordinating and doing design. Because we've had to relocate a lot of existing infrastructure, primarily just to, you know, allow for levy to be, to be raised and. And also build some new infrastructure to serve some of their pump stations that they've redone or completely rebuilt. And, and this project, you know, it's, it's still ongoing, like I said, it's been going for some time, we're kind of reaching the tail end of it. Unfortunately, but we will be working with them on, on finalizing some things on into twenty twenty five on this project. And it's something requires construction of three new river crossings, basically replacing three river crossings. Which, like the interstate crossings, are pretty big undertaking for us, it's about a twelve hundred foot span to pull across that river, so. Very long poles of wire, very tall poles to have our clearance above that river, it's a pretty interesting when they do it, they get out there on barges to help. Get the wire across the river, so it's a, something pretty impressive to see, and that's something we'll be working through, you know, again, for the rest of this year. And this is just a map from the Corps of Engineers website, hopefully you can see that okay. It highlights the areas there, the Argentine Armored Dale, and then what they call the central industrial district there. And those lines, the red or orange. Shows, those lines show all the places where the levy is being raised in those different areas. And the yellow squares are all their pumping stations, so any infrastructure in those areas, we've had to, had to relocate or, you know, redesign. And it's a huge project for them, nine point five billion, according to their website there, they're investing. You know, and I should mention that they are, they are reimbursing us for the cost for relocating infrastructure as, as part of this investment. So, but certainly a huge undertaking for them. Next project, we, we talked about our pole inspection program at, at length back in March, so just. Briefly to go through it, you know, again, that's our program for inspecting all the wood poles on our system. On a ten year cycle ideally in our fourth year currently, and so we're inspecting those just for their condition, structural integrity. And we're also treating those with preserved chemicals to help extend their life. So that's an ongoing project, again, a, a ten year project. So just a reminder, we have lower fifty seven thousand poles and we've inspected almost nineteen thousand of them so for, so far. And through May thirty first of this year, we've replaced a hundred and fifty four poles under this program. Bringing our total up to about twelve hundred and seventy four poles total we've replaced under this project. So I didn't have the, the final June numbers ahead of this presentation, but. We're basically on track between thirty and forty poles a month is, is what we average, we had, you know, some down months in the winter because of weather. But so we're, you know, probably close to a hundred and ninety and about thirteen hundred poles as of today. But our, our projections for this year are to replace a little bit under four hundred poles. This year, just on, on this project. So that's, that's been going well for us. We also have several transmission related projects where we're rebuilding aging and older sections of our transmission infrastructure. On the one sixty one and sixty nine KV systems, primarily the sixty nine KV system is where our, our older infrastructure is. But of course, our transmissions are, are, you know, backbone of our whole system, so we're trying to improve the reliability of that system with some of these projects. Currently, we have a crew working on replacing eleven transmission poles along Speaker Road, near Fifty Fifth Street and six thirty five, so. We've got a crew rebuilding a section line down there right now, and this month, we're starting a, a second project, rebuilding one of our. Tie lines, which we have basically five tie lines with, with the outside world with Evergy. And those lines are how we, you know, import any power we buy and export extra power we generate. You know, so they're, they're critical to the operation utility, they're very critical lines. So we're going to be rebuilding, you know, one of those in the southeastern portion of the county. And we're doing that in conjunction with a project to install some fiber optic on that line. And, you know, what that does for us, that project is, is we have fiber optic on quite a bit of our transmission system, it's actually up in the. Overhead static, it's inside the conductor itself on most of the lines. And so all of our, you know, control and monitoring that comes through our energy control center runs along that fiber. It also lets our substations talk to each other, the relays, so we have better protection for our transmission lines and our system. So we've got some projects to install fiber and, and, you know, have some better protection on those tie lines. So something, this is a project we've been working on for, for, for some time, for several years, doing some different sections, but. Something new we did this year. Ahead of, ahead of the fiber project and the rebuild project was doing an aerial drone inspection on the line. So it's something we're going to be, I think, you know, doing much more of, and I have a couple of slides just to kind of show you the results of that, this is just. A little about, about their process of the vendor that we selected. And, you know, they, they basically create an asset dashboard, dashboard for us. And then they fly a drone down the line, record a, a ton of images. And, and bring that back to the dashboard, and then they go through and look at all the pictures and then provide us with reports, you know, an assessment on the condition of the line. Any problems they found, so, you know, we get just a Excel report that summarizes the issues and kind of the severity and criticality of them. The results dashboard, that image is a little tough to see, but it's like a map view showing the path of the line and where all the issues are in kind of a map form. We do get all the images they take are provided to us, whether they're, you know, was a problem or not, we get images of, of everything they, they pull. We also get an Esri file that is, that has a file that works with our GIS system, I know we've talked about that a couple of times over the fast board session, so. We get some data we can import into our GIS data and manipulate and use for the line, and then just a written summary report. So I just had a couple of pictures I thought was pretty interesting, seeing the drone here above the transmission line and then the river and the city in the background. So, you know, they, they, they fly down the line and give us quite a few pictures, give you some overall pictures of, of each structure. Along the line there, and this is another picture, but they, they give you this overall picture. And then they have detailed pictures on this next slide here, you can see, I mean, a, a lot of detail, everything to. The pole, the wire, the insulator, even down to nuts and bolts, they report on. You know, you can, you can get up to there on the right there. That's a little collar pin or retainer pin that's come loose, it's not out, but they're able to pick up that much detail. And give us a report on that, and that was an, an image from the report right there, so. Really happy with the results on that and the kind of detail we're getting, and, you know, it's enabling us to. Better direct our, our projects and also kind of, you know, get ready for installing that fiber, understanding our connections and what kind of shape they're in and knowing what hardware we need to have before we. You know, get up there and start doing the work. The Mill Street Substation, it's a project, we talked, you know, some about the, the budget cycle last year. So we're replacing existing sixty nine KV substation, the Mill Street Substation with a new one sixty one KV substation. We're also going to be retiring. The old sixty nine KV Muncie Substation along with this project, so we're taking two of our older substations out of commission with this. Project, and we're doing it with the, the customer served by the substation is doing a huge, basically complete facility redo, or they're demolishing their old facility. And building a brand new one, so the project's taking place. In conjunction with that, all the upgrades they're doing, they're on site. So for this project, it was a smaller substation project, but. We did utilize Burns McDonald for the, for the civil and foundation type designs, we don't really have a lot of expertise on our side of the utility just yet. But the electrical design in terms of all the schematics and wiring and relaying and controls, as well as all the material specification procurement. We did all with BPU staff, all of our BPU engineers, so very pleased with that, we were able to get our guys in there doing this work, obviously, it's, it's great. Training experience for our younger engineers, and it's also obviously a cost savings for the utility, so very happy we were able to do that with this project. So construction on this will be kicking off the next two weeks. And then we're planning on having this project complete by September thirtieth, which is in line with. The customer's schedule for bringing their new facility online, that's when they're going to want a power. So that project will be starting up here very soon. And then this is just kind of a little map of where the substation is located at, it's tucked down just north of the Kansas River there. You know, a little industrial area, kind of off the beaten path a little bit. But you can see, we, we have the one sixty one KV line there is the blue dash line. That we built as part of the Rosedale project several years ago, so at that time, knowing the project was coming, we, we set the line up. To interconnect into this substation we knew we were going to build. And we do that, we'll retire that substation, that sixty nine line going north. And then the old Muncie Substation up north, that's a substation where. We built the Muncie two substation back in twenty seventeen, I believe, is when we brought that online and transferred all the load to the new substation. But the old substation had to remain in place, at least part of it, to feed that sixty nine line going down there, so be able to retire. All of that and get all those little assets off the system. And then the Piper overhead feeder project, that's another very big project for us. And, you know, what this project is about is there's been a lot of economic development. Now and, and projected in, in the one hundred and eighteenth street and State Avenue area, basically, so this project is to meet some of that. You know, new development, new load down there, and also tie in with some existing circuits and provide some redundancy to other loads in the area. And it's, it's going to happen in a couple of different phases, the first phase is rebuilding the existing line along one hundred and eighteenth street. To a new double circuit line, and then the second phase will be bringing new circuit from the one hundred and eighteenth street and parallel parkway. All the way back to our Piper substation. So we did receive a two million dollar EDA grant to partially fund this project, and that's going to pretty much take care of all of the phase one costs.
And that's from where?
From the EDA, Economic Development. What's that?
Our economic development?
No, it was a federal grant, I believe, yeah. And so, yeah, we received that grant and that's going to take care of the phase one costs, and, and the phase one, our, our last bit of major material we're checked into arrive in October. And so then we will start construction in October, hoping to have that, you know, phase one substantially complete by the end of the year. But, you know, depending on weather and, and if there's any delays in material, hopefully not, that may, you know, go into a little bit of twenty twenty five. And then we plan to start phase two of the project, the actual construction, kind of third, fourth quarter of next year, in twenty twenty five. So. And that's, which all the projects I had, I went through those kind of facets, are there any specific questions about them or?
You answered, I, I wonder what a tie line was, but you answered that question with your presentation, I appreciate that.
What is Marvin again? I mean, you, you, I mean, I'm familiar with all the other developments.
Yeah, they, they're a window manufacturer, so they're, they're going into the, they call it the Scanel Development, the formerly the Woodlands Racetrack, right there next to Amazon. Off Leavenworth, and so they manufacture windows basically. So we've been working with them on, on, you know, playing their infrastructure and, and getting everything sized, so. I, yeah, I'm not sure exactly when their construction is going to start, like I said, they're, they're still kind of figuring out delivery, some of their major material for the electrical piece anyway.
Okay, thanks.
Darren, I've got a weird question.
Sure.
On the, the drone photos. Who owns those after, do, do we own them? Does the third party own them?
You know, I. We, we get all those, we do own them, I guess I don't know if they keep any copies. I guess have to look at their contract. But I, well, we get every photo they take, we, I don't know that they, you know, keep any, I. Imagine, we've had some conversations with them, and I think probably the amount of storage you would have to have.
Right.
For everything you do would be astronomical, so, but I can check into that.
This is not a question, but a comment, I remember. A few years ago, maybe one or two, being at the APPA conference and in the exhibit hall, seeing these. Pictures of, you know, keeping track of your assets with a drone, and now it's here, it's pretty amazing.
Yeah, I said, I, you know, I had a couple of slides, because we were, we were really happy with the, the amount of data and quality report we got was, you know, very impressive to us, and. Get all those pictures, you know, actual report, and then again, you know, some data for our GIS system, so. Really great for us, and then, and it ties into a couple of projects we're doing, I mentioned also some, some NERC things we're working on, which we talked about, I think, last month. So it ties into several things we're doing, so we'll be looking to do, you know, budget for more of those going forward and, and try to work through our system, you know, working through. Probably our critical, you know, starting with the most critical tie lines, and then, you know, I talked about river crossings a little bit, that's something else we've talked about, because those are, you know, going across the river, they're hard to get eyes on, so. That's another place we've talked about utilizing the drones to, to inspect.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, thank you, Darren.
Thank you.
So next topic is miscellaneous comments. There's a couple of topics I'll get into, one first one is. After the last board meeting. Ty Gorman came up and asked if he could meet with me and, and staff. So we exchanged a few emails. And we do have a meeting set up for next Wednesday at two thirty. The topics that he wanted to discuss was a customer bill assistance. Got refunding opportunities, BPU community solar plans, energy efficiency, weatherization plans. And then he also asked if we could. Also meet at a local community site to meet with a larger group of customers. I've told him I wouldn't be opposed to it, but I'd like to see what the topics are. And, you know, so we can kind of understand what the expectations are. And how we may be able to, be able to participate or not in, in those type meetings, so. So we will be meeting next week at two thirty with, I think he's only going to bring one other person, at least, that may change, but. In our initial conversation, he's only going to bring one other person.
Is that on behalf of himself or on behalf of his?
My guess is a combination of both, probably himself and Sierra Club, now I know. Sierra Club is participating in this community meeting that he's asked us to come, come and participate in, so. And that's not until next month, I believe. So first thing first, is let's just get through next week's meeting, and then we'll continue conversations on, on anything after that. Next topic is, I just want to give the board a quick update on, on the GM search process that we've started, so. On the twenty fourth, we did issue an RFP through DemandStar, the proposals are due on July tenth. We did receive questions from bidders. Their due date was, we're submitting all questions was yesterday, we did answer all those questions today, so. The next phase is to. Get all the final, final bids in, and then. We, our plan is to try to summarize that. When they do come in, but as of today. Well, let me back up, so there's, there's twenty eight. Potential suppliers that, that received the notice, and those included. Information I received from the board, or we received from the board. The, those that were also registered within DemandStar, so when you're registered in DemandStar. You also list out what type of projects do you want to try? you also list out what type of projects do you want to track so that so that you can be notified when those type of bids go out. So and then uh there was a couple or so that purchasing had identified uh that they knew about. And uh so all total, there was about twenty-eight uh suppliers that uh that may be bidding. We've received comments today from fourteen that have expressed an interest. So that's about half the the total that that received the documents. So and I would expect that the one or two more or 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 a few more will come in uh between uh now and the end of the week or it and uh so anyway, once, once this all receives, uh, we would like to summarize, put it in, put everything into a package. Uh, and then uh I would suggest that the next board meeting during the work session that we meet with the board to go over all of the bits that have come in so that you guys have, or we're beginning to bring you fully up to speed on on all of that. So if you remember from the work session today, uh, the IRP is gonna be presented during, at times it's gonna be presented during the regular session. And that leaves the work session open as an opportunity to put this in front of the board. So and if Ward is okay with that, then I will move down that path and for our next board meeting. Thoughts, questions, comments? Sounds good to me. Okay.
I guess I um, I I would want to reserve the right for the board to review any individual proposal outside of the aggregated information that you'll all present.
Uh, we will uh it's our attempt to provide all the information to the board. So uh you know, we can get that to you prior to the meeting so that we can make the next board meeting work session more productive. So you'll have it in advance.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Okay. And then uh trying to think if there's something else. So moving on to the next topic, uh, this is uh the place where we opened the public comments section back up and and the purpose of this is for those that wish to comment on things we've covered on tonight's agenda and and it's only based on what we've covered tonight that you are allowed to uh speak to the directly to the board and you will be speaking to the board uh with your questions, concerns or questions. And uh so now I will ask if there's anyone in the room that wishes to speak about what was presented tonight. If you can come up to the podium, sign up, then they come up to the podium. And then seeing non, uh, Rob, is there anyone online?
Yes, sir. There's one phone number that is online ending, ending in nine three one zero. I'm unmuting it now. Oh, and uh Dr. Hall will also raise your hand.
It's Dr. Hall.
Uh, no, the next one's Dr. Hall. This one's still phone number nine three one zero. You're live.
So so can you state your name and address for the record? And you have three minutes.
Yeah, this is Ty Gorman at two eight four three Parkwood Boulevard. And uh I just wanted to uh jump in and uh say I appreciated the meeting we're gonna have next week. Uh, wanted to make a quick correction that it'll be um, you know, if you're a club, I I represent them regionally throughout the the Southwest Power Pool, but I uh when I'm uh talking to you next week and in a lot of these uh sessions with the community, I'm working with local volunteers and just volunteering with uh mostly echo the Economic Community Health Organization. Um, so I'll hopefully bring one more representative from that point of view next week to the meeting, which I appreciate and really get into um some of the the more detailed uh status on the efficiency program and the possible future for community solar programs. Um, with uh with the knowledgeable staff there. Um, and the opportunity I offered was um along with all the comments and recommendations uh for uh updates or improvements on the integrated resource planning process, which I hope each of you got. I don't think I got um a confirmation there, but I hope hopefully you got it through the email provided online. Um, but the, yeah, the 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 meeting opportunity um with the community would be with the Economic Community Health Organization and other kind of partner organizations who are uh really interested in knowing how BPU is working further to get the charges off the bill, how they might be working to reduce fixed fees in the long term, which might be a large discussion, but also um any improvements from the customer assistance program and uh efforts that I know you've been doing in the work sessions. And um and the medical devices, how that works has come up a a few times as far as
You have one minute.
Judd Office and protections for folks with EPAPs and other medical devices uh from more, more than a couple of folks uh have been asking about that. So that might come up. But anyway, you know, a variety of um questions on the uh how much progress the the board and the the staff has made over the past uh year uh since to talk about the rate case. So that that was just an opportunity if anybody um and staff or board wants to take uh take me up on that, I can schedule something uh to just have a community talk and Q and A. Uh, so, okay, just wanted to update on on that email I sent out with all the uh IRP details and appreciate uh the the work you're doing. Thanks.
So Ty, just just to be clear, the meeting next week will not cover the integrated resource plan. Um, there is a uh email address that we've set up for you to be able to submit any questions, comments, concerns she may have there. And then the next board meeting will be opening the public section, comment section up. So at that point, uh, you'll be more, would be more than happy to take your comments during that that time. But uh the meeting next week would be basically uh over what I read based on the emails that we've exchanged. But thank you, thank you for tonight.
Thank you. That sounds good.
Rob, is uh Dr. Hall, Dr. Hall, if you can unmute and state your name and address for the record, please. I'm sorry. Dr. Hall, go ahead.
Can you hear me? Yes. Good evening, Miss. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, sorry again, rechecking. Good evening. My name is Alma Rosas Hall. I live in Kansas City, Kansas. Um, thank you for giving me a little bit of your time. Uh, I was trying to go into the visitors' comments, but he cut off real quick. Um, I I'm just gonna send an email. It's again concerning with uh some of the bills from our community with limited English. So I will send that. And I also want to say thank you to all of you for constant, constantly working with our community with limited access and understanding of the process of dealing with BPU. The other question that I have is uh where can we find out uh about the information from the watering, water listening sessions? Um, I was asked about that considering uh some of our community have issues with water. Um, the piping, sometimes water is not being uh monitored correctly. So I want to be able to introduce the community to going in here and what you have to offer uh to support them. And then huh, have a million questions. Also, um, I want to see if you can tell me after all the grants and all the money that has been paid off for the building projects that were presented today in the meeting, how much of that, after everything's paid, how much is a taxpayer going to pay if there's money that needs to be paid out? Is the taxpayer gonna be responsible for some of that? I would like to know, maybe if you could share that. And then and
You have one minute.
And then um oh, no, we don't want to talk about that. The the other one is about um the chiefs. Um, as you know, many of us in Western Kansas, West Wyandotte, we're concerned about that, especially since the tax, the taxes are gonna go into the Wyandotte County due to all the progress that is going on. We are concerned if that is gonna create more um expenses for us. So if all these projects are being introduced, all these projects are being um conducting and and working on and all those are, is anyone taking in consideration the total amount of taxes that the citizens have to pay after all the money has been paid? And then that's what we have to come up as taxpayers. I've offered this question also to the unified government.
That is time.
They still have not responded. One of the things I do appreciate is
That is your time.
BPU is pretty good about responding to me, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
So Dr. Hall, uh, I will answer what I can. Okay.
I appreciate it, sir.
All right. First of all, uh, we've exchanged emails and I had a meeting set up with you to talk about customer bills and and that meeting uh did not happen and and it was no fault of BPU that the meeting didn't happen. So if you have if you have concerns about customers' bills and you want to speak to speak to concerns of other customers, then we will need to make sure that those other customers are present. And I've told you, you know, before and I'll say it again tonight, that I am more than willing to meet with anybody in the community about the issues they're having with BPU. So if you can reach back out to me, uh, we can set up a time and a place to meet. Any concern? Any, any concerns that you have about uh water quality? This, this is something new that I haven't heard before. If you can send me an email or if you can, we can talk by phone tomorrow, either whatever's more convenient for you. I can certainly look in that, lend that and have our water department to get directly involved with that. The projects that you
Can you give me a minute? I have the lady here.
Your time has elapsed. I'm just, I'm just going to answering the questions then and then we have to move on. The projects that you spoke to that that was presented tonight, it's all projects that was budgeted and are paid through through the revenues that BPU uh are receiving. And there would not be any additional costs that I'm aware of that would be passed to the, passed along to the public. Uh, and then in terms of the chiefs and taxes, I would encourage you to continue to go back to the unified government and have that conversation because BPU does not tax our citizens uh for property taxes or or things along those lines. So that would be a question that would directly, that will need to be directed to the unified government and hopefully they will provide you the answers that you're seeking. Okay, Angie will answer that.
The unified government has not been involved in those conversations. They've been held strictly at the state level at this point. So there is there is no information on that at this point. It's all at the state.
Thank you, Dr. Hall. Rob, is there anyone else? Mr. President, that completes our section of the agenda. I'll turn turn it back over to you.
Okay. This time, we're just gonna have some board comments. Uh, if you, you know, if you want to leave, that's fine. There won't be any questions. Uh, Rose, do you have any comment?
Uh, other than uh telling folks to have a a safe um uh Independence Day, I do not, Mr. President.
Mary?
Is it like Public Power Week coming up or did that pass? I don't know. I just read, I just read something. I don't know. About July the eleventh. I don't know. Maybe it was
Are you aware of?
I think we just had
You do a quick search?
Okay, just checking. But um it probably was. I just okay, you were right.
First, first week of October.
Okay, then I don't have any other comments. I just didn't want to miss it.
Right. No comments from me tonight. Thank you, Mr.
Stevie?
Just thank um Darren and uh thank you for your presentation. I want to also um wish myself a happy birthday on July tenth.
Happy birthday.
And uh looking forward to uh uh further discussion of regarding the uh bit of the, those who submitted proposals.
So I uh I apologize for that. I I did uh ask Chris for additional comments and neither one of us uh included that. So thank, sorry again. Happy, happy birthday, uh, July tenth. We'll be celebrating Stevie Wake's birthday.
That's all right. Uh, you 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 can pay me by taking me to lunch.
Okay. Senator?
Yeah, I'd like to add to that. Happy birthday ahead of time, young man. And uh the best to you, you, Mr. Wakes, uh, during that. And like to also thank uh the presentation again from the Spotties, from uh Kimberly and Core and Josh Spotty for the update. So many moving parts uh that are happening out of Topeka, some that are good, some that aren't. And I do appreciate the education that you brought in for your staying to here at this particular time especially. And thanks for those who were prepared to bring us updates and could and couldn't. And for those that did bring the update as well. I also would like to in general say that during this, the outages that were out and we look regionally, I was very pleased to see that proactively we were not as disaffected from our utility seemingly by the many outages that were inflicted in the area due to sore weather. And I want to thank uh the manager and uh staff for their proactiveness that kept many of us uh in service when surrounding areas um were 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 afflicted. And happy for the glorious fourth, everyone. Thank you, Mr. K.
I also, I just uh want to thank Kimberly and and Josh for coming to this evening's meeting and and making the presentation. It's uh always interesting, to say the least. Uh, and I also wish everybody a a safe and happy fourth. And uh, that's all I have to say. I would entertain a motion, a move?
Second.
To adjourn. Okay, we have a a motion and a second to adjourn. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Gonzalez?
Yeah, aye.
Brenneman?
Aye.
Haley?
Aye.
Wakes?
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
That motion carries. This meeting is adjourned.